Where we stopped that last time, and I know visiting a little bit ago, some of us got our days crossed up. And sensible because we had a makeup last week. It put two weeks in a row. But we'll have this one and one more for sure. According to how far we get tonight, maybe two more, but probably one more for sure. And then on Sunday nights, we'll be starting probably in two weeks, three at the most, we'll be starting to study in the book of Peter. So I'm looking forward to that. Be another churchwide study there. But for tonight, we're on page 114, "A Legacy of Love." A legacy of love. We talked about different things of leaving behind, you know, passing the baton. We watched that video last week of, you know, passing the baton. And no matter how good a runner is, when it's time to pass the baton, if you don't pass that baton properly, then a lot of things fall through and the mission is not accomplished there. So that is kind of what the topic that we covered there and brings us to a legacy of love. And that's talking about passing that legacy on. That word legacy, it's all about passing down the DNA of greatness. These principles that apply to all of us in the body of Christ too. So if you think not physical DNA, but spiritual DNA, you know, are, I mean, what we're, what a lot of, I guess the next generation down from me, what I see that they're interested in is making sure that their children are great athletes. And great at everything, but church when we have a chance. And I wrote a quote down that the Lord popped into my head when I was sitting back there studying. And actually it's for the next lesson, but so we'll cover three qualities when we get to that, but I just can't help but share this. So it's the third quality, which the first two are no good if the third one doesn't work. And I'll get into the details a little bit on being committed. Many say yes, but most mean maybe. Think about that. Many say yes, but most mean maybe. You know, they're not really that interested. It's easy to say yes, but there's no commitment. But these principles apply to all of us in the body of Christ. Every one of us, a legacy involves your impact to others. It's your spiritual DNA you pass down. You know, and if I'm not remembered for anything else, you know, I hope, pray I'm not remembered for my first 23 years of my life. I hope I'm remembered for the rest. And I hope I'm remembered in a way that there's no doubt I love Jesus Christ. I hope and I pray, you know, however long the Lord allows me to be a pastor, or gives me the liberty to be, or whatever. Or if he puts me up to do something else, what, that I hope that the top priority in my life is always front and center, Jesus Christ. That is, that is what I hope and pray. I hope that's the DNA I pass down to my kids. And I don't want my kids to get up here at my funeral and talk about how great a fisherman I am, because that'd be a lie. Or, you know, I loved hunting, or I loved, I wanted to talk about my love for Jesus Christ. But if I'm not showing them, I don't want them to get up there and lie, neither. If I'm not showing them that, then just let them get up and tell what the truth is. But if we want them to see our legacy, then we gotta leave it because they're gonna see whatever is really important to us. But what kind of legacy am I leaving? If you don't think of anything else in the rest of this section, think about that. What kind of legacy am I leaving? And the reference there is Genesis 1:28, and you can read that, but one thing I want to focus on there about being fruitful. Of course, that at that point in time, you know, we talked about studying the Word of God. You need to, you need to study it and you need to figure out, okay, what did he mean exactly right then? And how does it apply today? And then how does it apply to me? So at the point in time in Genesis, when this was originally stated, be fruitful and multiply, you know, there, he was talking about, you know, physically, but then also spiritually. And today, this would obviously be applied a little more spiritually, be fruitful. So what fruit are you passing on? You know, Matthew talks about that. Is it in chapter 10 and chapter 12? But somewhere in Matthew, he talks about you will be recognized by your fruits. You will be recognized by your fruits. So be fruitful, be fruitful. So this verse is said, is God's commission to Adam and Eve. And he says, "You're in charge, now do good." That's about way more than just, okay, y'all have a bunch of kids and make sure the earth gets populated. It's about so much more than that. And how might Adam, how might have Adam obeyed this commandment in the garden of Eden? Of course, follow the Lord and be blessed, you know, how might, and he didn't follow at all. He, he got caught up in his own thoughts because somebody got him off center, which was, I mean, we point to the wife, but it was the old devil. But again, she consented, then Adam consented. So we gotta take responsibility. So follow the Lord and be blessed. That's what we need to do. That last question there, "How would homes and workplaces, churches and communities look differently if more men lived this direction for the Lord out today?" Living it out today. And I shared with y'all, I think it was Sunday, or maybe it was our last men's session. I can't remember when I, when I shared it. But there's, it was some statistics about how many get saved. And the highest number was when dads home and get saved. When dad gets saved, then the number of kids exponentially goes up. So how would our homes, workplaces, churches and communities look differently if more men live this direction? You know, talking about follow the Lord and doing what he's asked us to do, be fruitful. More would be drawn to Christ and this country would not be in the mess it's in right now. I mean, we're on the, we're on the brink of losing a lot of freedoms if we're not careful. So we wouldn't be in that shape. And I hate to beat up the men, but you know what God has called us to be? Spiritual leaders. Every one of us. And to that mean, well, I got divorced, so I guess I can, that, get over that. God forgives, okay? A lot of times we hold ourselves to an accountability that God don't even hold us to. And, you know, we disqualify ourselves. The Bible didn't disqualify us from stuff. And we overlook a lot of times forgiveness and we hold that, and it took me a long time. That's one of the things that withheld me, or that allowed to withhold me from going ahead, stepping into the ministry and saying, "All right, God, here I am messing up." I just, I could not audibly, I was thinking it. I could see that God was calling me into it. But to audibly say their words, I really struggled because of my former life. Because of the promiscuous things I did, because of the decisions I had made, because of the people that I had earned. And finally, see, God had been over it because I'd asked him to forgive me. And I took that to a preacher one time. He said, "Did you ask for forgiveness?" Actually, it wasn't. It was a thinking. And I said, "He said, 'Did you ask for God to forgive you for all that?" And I said, "Yes, sir." He said, "Now you need to get over it." That's what he told me. And that has stuck in my head. And he's probably been one of the most, not probably, has been one of the most influential men, godly men in my life. And, but that always comes to mind. But the devil don't want you to get over it. He wants you to stay hung up on it, whatever, to keep you out of being fruitful, right? So to be about the work of passing on, I'm at the top of 115, our colleague still, right? Is to be about the work of passing on the spiritual inheritance of a comprehensive theistic worldview. So we're in the world. I mean, you know, a lot of people make fun of faith training. And my kids are there, and if they worked there, they'd be at home, getting homeschool. And that's just my opinion. But, you know, they're, they're teaching things from a theistic worldview. We're not trying to shelter them completely away from the world. We're teaching them through a biblical lens, how to be in the world. Because, you know, when, when you step out, most likely, all of our children aren't gonna grow up and just be ministers in the church. They're gonna go out into the world. They're gonna get jobs. They're gonna go in, they're gonna be teachers. They're gonna be whatever. And, you know, hopefully some of our, our young men will step up and answer the call to be preachers of the Word. And, but we need to keep, you know, a theistic worldview. So from God's point of view, we're in the world. I mean, Jesus even prayed about that in the book of John. He said, "I'm not asking you to take them from the world, but to protect them in the world." So that is why it is so important that we study the Word of God. So as kingdom men were created to call, to transfer a theistic viewpoint to those within our sphere of influence. Now, there's some people you're not gonna influence, but people that you think you may have an opportunity to influence, that's, that's in your sphere. You need to do that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways, you know, whether, whether it's where, you know, wherever you work, or wherever you spend time, or whatever, you know, that's your sphere. You can have an influence on people. But again, we pass on and says that DNA, passing that spiritual DNA. So what are the differences between humanism and theism? Of course, that's really easy. Man's way or God's way. You know, looking at it through man's eyes or God's eyes. And that's, that's, there's just really two choices. In what ways does this humanism bleed into our culture? So instead of impact, to see, at all costs, we wanna fill our church up. And that's why there's a lot of churches that, the churchiest thing about them is it says something church on their sign. They've been like, allow the world to come in and impact the church, rather than inviting the world and impacting them for Christ. I mean, we want the worldly to come. I mean, Jesus said, "I come for the sick." This has gotta be a hospital, our churches do, for the sin sick. And if we, if we look down our nose with somebody we know is living rotting in sin, we all living in sin, if we wanna really be honest. But somebody we know just blatantly, and we look down our nose, or we laugh at them. Or when they walk over to say something to us, we walk off. I mean, we need to repent if we do that. But a lot of churches aren't willing, you know, what did Jesus do? I mean, he went to the well, where an adulterous woman was gonna come, and he knew it. He put himself in a position where another adulterous woman would be drug over to where he is, that the Bible says, I mean, they talk about, just protest. I mean, caught her in a very act. And who did he come down on? Those that brought her. I mean, you tell me that we don't need to be judgmental. We need to, you know, we need to call a spade a spade. Jesus did. He loved on them all, but he did it with the truth. He never said, "Oh, it's okay if you're sleeping around. Just don't get caught again." He didn't say that, but a lot of times that's how we are. We're, you know, we're hurt because we got caught, not because we did wrong. But he changed those ladies' lives and because he loved on them with the truth. So what do you think, why do you think so many men consider humanism as an acceptable breed by which to function? And I think humanism is teaching a kid, and maybe we've all been guilty of it. I know I have. Of teaching a kid how much more important it is to be the best athlete in school versus to be the best Christian you could be. You know, what are we showing? What legacy are we leaving with them? So a divine inheritance is not houses, clothes, cars, fame, or money. Divine inheritance start with the transfer of faith. It doesn't matter how much money a man has, if he does not have the foundation of solid faith. I mean, what does the scripture tell us? You can gain the whole world, yet lose your own soul. And you gain, you gain not a thing. With biblical values, it will all come crashing down. When this, without biblical values, excuse me, it will all come crashing down when the storms of life roll in. And they coming. I don't care how much money you got. You can't pay off the storms. They're coming. They're coming and they're gonna come to your front door. You know, I have one of my buddies that lives out here on the lake. When we had a big flood, 2015, 16, a bunch of people flooded. And he said, "It was about 18 inches from my doorstep." He said, "That storm nearly got me," you know, and sometimes we get complacent. We're like that and say, "Oh, nevermind, I got it, Lord. I don't need you at all." And the next time, we're less dependent on God, rather than saying, and I'm not saying that he did this, but just using it as an example. You know, rather than saying, you know, "Lord, thank you for preventing that to happen." You know, rather than saying, "Oh, I really didn't need you anyway." So again, it's, you know, that inheritance, we're talking about divine, you know, this legacy, it's not clothes. It's not houses, or cars, or fame, or money. What are you leaving behind? And y'all have heard me say it a million times, you got another breath, you got another opportunity to do things right. You may have messed it up with this one and messed it up with that one, but you still breathing. You got a chance. You got a chance. And don't think you're gonna fix everybody. And just like, you know, we was praying, you know, I did for a long time. I ain't thought nothing else about it really, about the whole deal with selling alcohol at the rodeo. God took care of it. But the battle ain't over, but God took care of it. So how do biblical values and a solid faith help a person, a family or community during difficult times? And, you know, we talked about this last Sunday night of, you know, when Paul, a lot of times in his letters, Paul's writing, he writes grace and peace unto you. And he does it specifically in that order, grace and peace. So because if you haven't received God's grace, you're never gonna have peace. Not true. And then you're never gonna have joy. So the only way to true peace and joy, right? Is to hold on to those biblical values and even grace, and then with grace comes peace, and with peace comes joy. It's pretty simple. But many dads, again, have put money and sports over faith. Money and sports over faith. So page 116 there, "What are some of the common difficulties we're facing?" Please speak up. If you got an answer written, wrote down, just interject, interrupt, whatever. "What are some of the common difficulties we're facing as men in our culture?" I wrote down one thing, compromise values. Compromise values. And when, you know, and I say it a lot of times, just as an example, you know, when we're practicing on Wednesday, so we can play ball on Sunday, we gotta compromise value. We gotta compromise faith. And I see that, you know, used to, in my lifetime, even as early on as a dad in my lifetime, it was unheard of, very few exceptions, to play ball or even think about practicing on Wednesday or something. Just didn't happen. And I mean, that's why I used to, you couldn't, most stores didn't even open until 1 o'clock on Sunday. And they sure didn't sell alcohol. And, but all that is going away because too many people got compromised values. So in what ways can we seek to infuse biblical values in the solution steps of these issues? So surely y'all gotta give me some examples there. In what ways can we seek to infuse biblical values into the solution steps of these issues?
Always try to put God first.
Yes, sir. I was a little raw. I just put one man at a time. One man at a time. I mean, and think about that. I mean, again, in your sphere of influence, think about one man. If just each one of us did that, one man, and we really started putting focus on that man. And right, I mean, that's been a ministry, you know, studies and outreaches, but one man at a time. And, you know, there's, there's, on a Sunday morning, we got a lot of men that come in here. I mean, when I stand out for our men's group, they at least come sometime. I've got them in my men's group. And a couple of them, they may not come here, but they'll come to stuff like this occasionally. And, I mean, it's about 60 men. If we just pick one and get that one influenced, and then he picks one, I mean, and it's just, it's exponential how that can happen. So that's scripture there, Matthew 22:35 through 40. That's really what it's all about. So what are we putting ahead of Christ? So in this scripture, if you back up, you know, Sadducees and Pharisees, they were trying, they hated each other. They were trying their best to find some common ground. And where they found their common ground is their hate for Christ. That's where they found their common ground. So they talked this, and I've gotta paraphrase a little bit. They talked this young lawyer in to go and be in their spokesman, right? So he comes up to Jesus in Matthew 22, the certain lawyer, I think is what the King James says. "One of them," he said, "a lawyer asked him a question, testing him." That's what it was all about, it really. They were trying to trip up, and I find so much humor in that, trying to test Jesus Christ. But we're still doing it every day. When you, as a nation, want abortion to be full term nationwide? You're testing the Lord, believe me. God ain't gonna let that mess go for so long. And we're gonna be punished, but I'm pretty sure we're getting it right now. Says, "Teacher, which is the great commandment in the law?" And he said to him, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your mind." He said, "This is the greatest and foremost commandment. The second is like it. You shall love your neighbors yourself." He said, "On these two hang all the laws of the prophets." And so in a nutshell, what he said right there, so what they were trying to do, and we've talked about this scripture a bunch, is they were trying to get Jesus to say one commandment was more important than the other. So if he said that, they got it. But they didn't have anything to say with this because those two wrap all 10 of them in those two statements. So he basically said, "If you do this, you're doing them all." I mean, he, boy, he was slick, I tell you what. And the next scripture there talks about love and all of the qualities of love. Most times we, we try to take this and heat it up and stick it on a couple getting married, and it's a great verse for that. But what a lot of times we overlook is this verse, what it means to us as individuals. What this verse means to us as men. And it ties into what Matthew said about love. And it gives all these descriptions in 1 Corinthians 13:4 through 7, all these descriptions of love and what it is. And all it's doing is describing God's love for you. That's what that's describing. And I mean, you read that right there, and we can't forgive somebody because they said something ugly to us. Or they didn't speak to us. I mean, I had a guy in here, this been several years ago. Got mad, didn't come for three or four months, but so and so didn't speak to him. I mean, we're not seeking Jesus if we're coming and that's gonna keep you away from church. We're not. That is immature and, but it happens. I mean, you know, we had, another guy, he did, this has been longer ago than that. Didn't come for three or four months because I called on him to pray. Been in church his whole life. What are we coming for? I mean, I mean, if you don't wanna pray, you know, let me know. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I guess part of my growing, brother going, is don't just call on somebody unless they've said it's okay. But you would think, you've been in church your whole life, and you're seeking to grow, you're seeking to mature. And, you know, I stumbled all over my prayers for the longest time and still do occasionally. Man, just pray. Whatever God lays on your heart, I laugh and y'all get a kick out of this. And this is when I lived in North Louisiana, and I was just getting into youth ministry, and one of their boys, it was some trip we'd went on, or some trip they'd been on or something. And sometimes, you know, you hear a story and you can't remember, was I there? Or did they just tell me about it? And I've heard it so many times, I can't remember if I was there or not. Anyhow, this young man, he bowed, he prayed, and he said, "Lord, thank you for all the hot girls here today." And, I mean, that was his prayer. But, I mean, he was telling the truth. He was thankful for all them good looking girls that was on that trip. And, I mean, to a teenage boy, that's pretty important. But sometimes we get a little too complicated with our prayers and we overlook, you know, like him. He didn't overlook the fact that there were some good looking girls there with him, and he was thankful for that. And if I was 16, I probably would have been pretty thankful for that too. But...
We got the mouth and he said, "Dear Lord, please, well, won't you come and take the children there?"
Hey.
He wasn't trying to be funny.
Right.
He was serious.
Oh, yeah?
Several years ago, I was doing a revival, and the first church I ever did a revival with. The pastor lined everything up. It was a church that had died, the doors had closed. We were working to try to, they were trying to get it going again. Anyway, we were going out that Saturday. We got several members of the community together to go out knocking doors, and we did. And so come back and have a fair time. The next day, I guess, on Sunday, actually, we go. They called on this one fellow. They said, "Lord, boy, we had a good time out there visiting yesterday. If you'd have just been with us, you'd have seen how much fun he was doing."
Not even think about what he was saying. And it's, but sometimes we'll do that. We'll go to get off in something and we ain't even, we forgot to bring the Lord with us, you know, forgot to pray about it. Or, you know, I was kind of thinking about, you know, again, earlier, I said, you know, thinking about it tonight, about, about our men's ministry and, you know, I just felt like the Lord laid on my heart, maybe, maybe you need to pray more. Maybe you need to pray more specific. But, so at top of 117 there, "How would emphasizing love positively impact our homes?" And again, the definition of God's love is described there broadly in Matthew 22, and more specifically in 1 Corinthians 13. So how would emphasizing love positively impact our homes, communities, churches and society? We gotta focus on God's love, not man's. And, man, He'll bless us. He'll bless us for that, for sure. So that brings us over to the next little portion of the study, page 118, as we move on through there, wisdom and authority. So we, we talked about, you know, a legacy of love and leaving that spiritual DNA. This is talking about wisdom and authority. So a greater focus on what we pass on to others will help in raising up more kingdom men who impact culture. Again, you know, one man at a time. And maybe that, maybe that first man is yourself. Maybe that's the first man that you need to focus on. But about raising up more kingdom men, "One of the most dynamic male relationships in scripture gives us insight to the nature of this transfer." Of course, Moses and Joshua. Moses was passing that torch on, and Joshua was a little overwhelmed, or maybe underwhelmed out. He wasn't where he needed to be quite, but Moses was helping him get there, and the Lord was helping him get there. And, you know, and then, of course, we know the story there. He got where he needed to be. But Deuteronomy 34, verse nine, "Now Joshua, the son of Nun, was filled with the spirit," that's God's, "the spirit of wisdom, for Moses had laid his hands on him, and the sons of Israel listened to him and did as the Lord had commanded Moses." So that, everything, you know, talking about brother going, sit here, if the Lord had been there, boy, he'd have seen it. See, they brought the Lord in this. The Lord was all in this. So the spirit of wisdom, and that's, that's from the Lord. He said, "Moses laid his hands on him." You know, we do, we lay hands sometime and pray, you know, is there anything magical about our hands? No. It's about a committed, faithful prayer. And it brings, it just, it seems to bring a little reverence. And I think that, you know, it, it just gets our focus. You know, one of the, one of the sweetest prayers that I can remember, when I was ordained, is my son came up here. I didn't ask him to, but he came up here and he nailed, he prayed, and we were both crying before it was over with. And, man, you just, there's something special about in a sincere spirit of laying hands on somebody. And some of that stuff you see on TV where they touch you on the forehead and fall out backwards and all, you know, I ain't found that as being a biblical thing. And the power's in God, not in my hands. It is in God and it is in, it is in His Word. So top of page 119. Do you think it's even necessary to model it, talking about, you know, what Moses did and the way he communicated and transferred that, that spirit of wisdom, and not just wisdom, but a spirit of wisdom? And of course, that was putting the importance on God. And that's what Moses was doing, which was, was the utmost, utmost importance. And, you know, it's like a lot of things, if you don't live it, you lose it. So that legacy, you know, if you say, you tell your kids, or you tell your grandkids, or you tell your neighbor about this great legacy of God that you wanna share with them, but if you don't live it, you gonna lose that. I'm talking about that opportunity, that chance. If we don't start living it before somebody, you're losing that opportunity. So we see how Moses transferred the values and perspective of the kingdom of God through transferring the spirit of wisdom to Joshua. A transfer of kingdom values and perspective can be passed down in many ways and should be passed down to all. You know, there's a lot of things that we need to pass down. I mean, we've passed down and we've got to the point, you know, church, I like watching barn wood builders. And at least every second or third or show or so, they're talking about something about the importance of a church because they've restored a bunch of the old log churches. And one of the oldest churches, maybe the... and, uh, one of the oldest churches, maybe the oldest church, uh, not the oldest, but it's one of the oldest Baptist churches, I think it was in West Virginia, Virginia somewhere, it, it was, I think they just celebrated sometime in the last two or three years, or two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Morgan's Baptist Church, I forget where it was at. And, and, and then they showed pictures of all of these little communities that, that everything centered around the church. It, that, that happen anymore. It, it just, it's just not that important. Just if we go occasionally and once in a while, then we've checked the box. That's what we're teaching, and, and, and you, you see what's happening to our nation. And, and I, I tell you, if, one man at a time, we got to, we gotta get things back in order. Numbers twenty-seven, twenty-three says, "Then he laid hands on him and commissioned him, just as the Lord had spoken through Moses." So Moses was doing just what God called him to do. So, uh, bottom, or towards the bottom, or second from bottom on one nineteen, Moses wasn't, wasn't too quick to pass on, you know, he didn't, when I say too quick, he, he didn't just dump it and go. So he wasn't quick to pass on spiritual authority to Joshua. He knew that he needed to wait until the time was right. See, some people step in too quick, you know, you get, and, and, and it kinda throws me back sometimes, I mean, some, I'll have people that, that come in here, it may be the first time, they've been to the church, the first time I've met them, "Hey, where can I help in the church?" Well, I mean, I'd like to see you come persistently.
Yeah.
Faithfully for, for a while. That's what I'd like to see you do. And, yeah, but I'd like to help out with the kids, or like to do something, and I mean, I don't even remember the last name yet. And, and, you know, we, we gotta do things when it's the right time. I mean, because if you're not faithful to your church, you, you're, you're struggling to be faithful to the Lord. And, and I know people will say, "Well, you ain't gotta go, your Bible don't say you gotta go to church to be saved." Boy, you reading between some lines. Um, and, and you're not very spiritually healthy if you're saying that. If you loving the Lord, you gonna love His people. You gonna want a fellowship with His people.
Two eighteen weaver, two eighteen weaver reeds, towed out, broke the leg. You know, God, he got my kitchen that night, so...
That's right.
I was hanging there upside down all by myself, about four o'clock in the morning, and I thought that was a big one, but I don't know if it is. That's the first time I thought of it.
Yeah.
Like, you don't have church, you don't have to go to church.
So here, one, one more time, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on get your attention, and...
The biggest problem I sleep over, people don't know God.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're not gonna know Him thirty minutes every Sunday.
That's right.
You're something way out, John, but you got to seek Him, you got to really seek Him.
I was talking to a friend of mine today, my CPA actually, and, uh, she and I, we usually talk a little bit about CPA business, and then we get on the board almost pretty much every time. And when I left today, she said, "Man, I always love our talks," you know? And, and, and she shared something with me, her pastor had shared with her, said, "What, what you don't have in your mind, you can't love in your heart."
That's right.
And, and, and so if we ain't got the wisdom of the Word of God in our mind, then, then it ain't gonna get to our heart, and when our heart really talking about our spirit and our soul. And that's kinda like what you're talking about, Brother Johnny, and, and, you know, and, and God tries to get our attention in a lot of ways, and thankfully, we listen. Sometimes, and, and sometimes we don't, you know, and I've had, I've had other people have, you know, not the same experience, but something similar, and, uh, boy, they get on fire for a month or two. And, and, but I could see the look in your face when I drove over to Lufkin to see you. Them rods and stuff, metal everywhere, uh, that, that God was working on you. There wasn't a doubt in my mind. And, uh, God will use all kinds of stuff.
I didn't make no promises to him, but I made one myself.
Yeah.
And I go back to church.
That's right. We're, we're glad you survived. I mean, glad you had the accident, but whatever it took to, for God to get you where you needed to be.
We can't give Him in our heart, but we can give Him in our mind.
Yes, sir.
You can't love somebody you don't know.
That's right.
You got to get to know it, or the heart will fall in love.
Yes, sir. But that was, you know, that's, what ain't in your mind, you can't love in your heart. And she shared with me, I didn't know where her pastor is, but, uh, well, I think I do, but anyhow, that, that's, that's pretty deep, pretty deep. But it's up to us to, to similarly pass on, uh, spiritual authority. It, it is really up to us. I mean, again, you, you can tell your children or your loved ones all day long, but until you show them. And, and that's like Mo, with Moses and Joshua. Moses showed and showed and showed and showed Joshua, and, and led him up to that point to finally say, "Okay, Joshua, now it's yours to carry on, brother. It's yours to carry on." And so there, uh, top of page one twenty, says, "Explain the difference between passing on spiritual wisdom and passing on spiritual authority." So, un- until you gain that wisdom, you, you definitely not gonna get the authority. And, and that's, that's the thing of, of somebody coming in to church and, and not taking time to gather some of the wisdom, you know, because there's some people, man, they're, they're great to be a, a helper, but they don't need to be the teacher.
Yeah.
They, they don't need to be the teacher, because they ain't, they don't have the wisdom yet in order to, to gain the authority. And, and that's where, you know, as, as a pastor, that's, that's a tough one, a lot of times, because, man, got that opening, and I can't get nobody. I mean, I've been praying somebody would take my Sunday School class for, for three years. And, and it ain't, it ain't worked yet. I've had two or three come in, and they're, I just can't do it. And, and, and I'm not willing to just give it to anybody. And, and I, I've let a, a few men fill in for me, and, and then, you know, but until I, I see them growing in that wisdom, I ain't ready to turn it over. If, if I gotta keep teaching it, then I'm gonna keep teaching it. But, but I'm, I'm hoping, I'm praying, you know, we forget a lot of times that our Sunday morning Bible study is, is, should be our future teacher's training program. That, that's why Sunday morning Bible study is so important. And, and I think maybe that's why some don't come, is because they're scared the Lord may convict them into wanting to do something. Maybe, maybe that's why, I don't know.
Tell you what, Brother O'Trant, I think he's got a call.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Eddie, Eddie said, "He, he years ago."
Right. Oh, I think so, he's, uh, we, we visit, and I, I'm excited for, decided to have him here.
He's small.
Yes, sir. So, uh, what are some key identifiers you would want to see in a man before commissioning him to further the future by leading others? That's just a focus on Christ. A focus on Christ. It, it ain't about knowing everything, you know, some people, you know, some people have the wisdom, but, but they may not have the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The confidence.
Have a plan.
And, 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 you know, sometimes we just, we, we need to just give them that nudge. I mean, you, you see their focus, you see their wisdom, and you just, you just give them that little bit of push. And then some people think, "Well, because of my former lifestyle or whatever, I'm just not qualified to do that. I got no business doing that." I mean, and that's what the devil wants you to think. But, uh, man, I read through the scriptures, and oh, 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 Lord, He can use some rascals, but they ain't, none of them was half-committed. They were fully committed to God. So they had, they got the wisdom, and, and Jesus put them in three years, three and a half years of rigorous training. And then he said, "All right, boys, I gotta go. And, and I've given you authority, the wisdom comes, uh, with wisdom comes authority." He said, you know, "You gained the wisdom, I've given you the authority. Now go."
A lot of people have difficulty discerning between responsibility and authority.
Yes, sir.
You give some people a little responsibility, they won't take a lot of authority.
Boy, ain't that the truth.
You know, and, and we're just responsi-, he's authority.
Yes, sir.
And we're just the responsible persons, we use for it.
Amen.
But that's been a problem I've seen all year, my pastor.
Yes, sir.
Give somebody a little responsibility, and they'll take ten miles of authority.
That's right. That's right. And that's, that's a tough balance, you know, because you...
Yeah.
You, you, you try to balance that the right way, and, yes, sir. I'm, I'm trying to learn, brother Goins.
I should do it, bro.
But so, so it says, "Unfortunately, though, too many men want to lead without serving first." And I, I read it in, in somewhere, and I think, I think scripture solidly backs it up, that you, you can't lead unless you're willing to follow.
Right.
And, and, and I take that, and, and, you know, a lot of people, they're not, again, you wanna teach a class, but, but you're not here every chance you get to be here, but you think you wanna teach a class. And, and again, that, that's, that's somebody wanting to, to, to lead without serving first. And, and a lot of people, man, they, 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 they think it'd be, you know, I guess status or whatever to, to be a teacher, but I wanna say, you know, the servant part is serving the Lord first, but they want authority without surrendering. Of course, that's backwards, right? But Joshua, he had matured enough, and Moses, through the Lord's guidance, uh, Moses realized it was time. It was time, and he passed it on to him. I'm gonna read the last part of that, uh, verse there, Joshua eight, thirty-three, uh, through thirty-five, uh, just, just a hair over halfway down, says, "Then afterward," uh, "he read all the words of Moses," says, "then afterward, he read all the words of the law, the blessing and the curse." See, that's the thing, that, that's, you know, there, when it, when it comes to, to following this, if you're not careful, if you're not following, that is gonna end up being a curse and not a blessing, uh, when we're not doing what we're supposed to. But he said, "He, he read all the words of the law, the blessing and the curse. According to all that is written in the book of the law, there was not a word of all that Moses had commanded, which Joshua did not read before all the assembly of Israel with the women and the little ones and the strangers who were living among them." So what happens a lot of times is, you know, we get, we pass on the torch, the torch to somebody, and they go to skipping stuff. They go to mislook, overlooking that, where it talks about, uh, what God thinks about homosexuality. We, we, we go to skipping that part where he says about, "Don't forsake the assembling of ourselves together." We, we go skipping over that part that, that says, you know, "Men are to be the spiritual leaders." We go to skipping over those things. And, and, but, and it says here about Moses, or about Joshua, it says, uh, "There was not a word of all that Moses had commanded," which Jo, Moses was, was, was following the Word of God. Of course, he didn't have this, this whole book that we have today. He had those first five books, and, and it says, it was, uh, let me start over there, "There was not a word of all that Moses had commanded, which Joshua did not read before." He didn't skip a thing. He said, "This is what we're to follow." So, we, we have got to, to follow in those foot, same footsteps. We can't say, "Well, you know, just, just don't preach on that one part." You know, and, and now I know there's, there's certain things that I gotta be sensitive about, and now I ain't talking biblical stuff, but I'm, more, more things that, we're, we're different thing, you know, we just gotta be, certain, certain stuff, you learn to be sensitive about how to step around some things, but when it comes to the Word of God, get mad at it, because I'm gonna tell it.
That's right.
And, and, you know, take it up with God, right, brother Goins?
Amen.
Do you need to be disciplined or, or discipled? Sorry, got that word discipline in my mind. That, that middle question, do you? So think of personally, do you need to be discipled yourself? And that's where I, I talked about while ago, you know, one man at a time, and maybe that first man is the one in the mirror. Do you feel like you need to be trained in wisdom and spiritual authority? If so, who might disciple you? Have you considered asking them? And, and, you know, and, and I, I've, I've seen, you know, I, I don't wanna lead anybody to leave, I don't think any of our men are growing, because I have seen men, you know, and I, I've seen when, when Roger wasn't coming regularly, and I, when, when Johnny wasn't coming regularly, and you didn't have any choice, because you was the preacher or something. But, you know, and, and Brother Gil had, and I'm just picking on Brother Goins, y'all. And, and, you know, there was a time when, you know, he shared his testimony with us about Sunday mornings, he sat on the dock and watched the, the cattle eagles fly over. Most people call them cowbirds, but, uh, that's actually a little black bird, about that big. Cattle eagles fly over, and Brother Gil said, "They don't see him out there tomorrow on Sunday, right?" And, and so I know God is working in some of our men.
Yeah.
And, and, and I have to, sometimes, see, the devil wants me to get focused on the things that ain't happening sometimes, and, and, and overlook the things that are sometimes, and I have to remind myself of that. And, and, you know, and I have a, a, a few in the church that are really encouragers, and, and that's a gift. That is a spiritual gift, because I need it. I'm just that hard-headed. And so I know God is working in some of our men, and I'll tell you what, that, that is a one awesome blessing to see, that, that God is doing that. And, and, but, but I ain't settling for that. I want more. I want more, and that should be all of our desire, to want more people, not just men, but people, to come to know the Lord and to serve Him, and, and then want, you know, want to go further and further in what God has, has got us to do. So it says, "Pray about ways," there at the bottom, a little prayer. Pray, pray about ways God would have you transfer either spiritual wisdom or spiritual authority to someone else. Ask God to help you identify someone you can disciple on a greater level. So, so something to really think about there. Ask God that if, if there's somebody that, that He might have prepared for your heart, for you to focus on. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna just dip in to the first part, is that okay with you guys, the first part of the last session here? Y'all got a few more minutes? Brother Gil, you good back there?
I'm good.
Okay. We'll, 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 we won't cover a whole lot, and, uh, this identifying key influencers. So a lot of times it's about, so you think of influencers, you can think of that word in two different ways, and we'll see where, I, I just wanna throw a note out there, but we'll see where this last, this last section takes us. But there may, there may be influencers you need to find in your life that you need to get out. And there may be certain influencers that you need to get yourself exposed to. And, and, you know, because the Bible's very clear about when we put ourself with people that aren't wise, it affects us in a negative way. So, so two different ways we could look at that word there, influencers, but, uh, pa, page one twenty-four there is, is starting off, so the last section we just finished there, talked about how to implement small steps of discipleship into your daily rhythms. I mean, it, it may be somebody that, that comes in the feed store twice a week, you have an opportunity to plant a little seed, spiritually speaking. And, you know, it may be somebody that, they, they won't come to the church, but they'll stop by and see you at the office there, this association office, you know? Because you'll have, like, when we, in, in Arkansas, we did the, what we called the Wild Gang banquet, and Hornbeck, that's, that's kinda their biggest men, big ministry for this area. And, and there's a lot of people that will, will go there, but they won't go to regular church, you know? We're, we're praying about, you know, what the Lord might have us to do with a cowboy church. And, you know, there, there's an opportunity to, to maybe reach people that, they, they won't come in, you know, a fancy churchy-looking church, what we've come to believe church should look like. But they'll come out to a rodeo arena where you're sharing the same word. And, and, hey, I, I seen Jesus go to where they work.
Right.
I, I didn't, I didn't see Bill to Bill and say, "This is the only place you can worship God." But, but the key is about worshiping God. And what happens, though, is you get people in something like that, and, and you get them to realize who God really is, who God really is. And I mean, what did the, the lady at the well, I, I know I'm getting off here again, you know, she said, "Well, well, you say we gotta worship over there, and, and, you know, we say we're gonna worship over here." You know, he says, "There gonna come a time when you worship the Spirit of truth, that it ain't bound to there or there." And, and of course, I think it was a, a picture he was painting of, of the church growing and spreading, and, you know, "We, we ain't gotta go to Israel to serve God." And, and I think that's what he was pointing to. So, uh, but anyway, how to, how to implement small steps of discipleship into your daily rhythms. As you consider ways to expand your spiritual influence, what incremental steps did you take? So think about, and, and now this is thinking back to the last session, not, not what we just finished, but what we were working on and, and carried over into what we just finished, but, you know, consider ways to expand your spiritual influence, and what incremental steps have you taken, or are you taking? Are you taking any at all? Think about that. So, uh, the, the last session, but it says, you were challenged to begin identifying where to spend your influence to build the kingdom. Now we're gonna look more intently, it says, uh, at how to identify key influencers, key influencers. So what could happen to someone who consistently made unwise decisions? And, you know, even in somebody that, that you say, uh, uh, that's a Christian and, and they just continually, they keep making unwise decisions, you know, the, the, the Lord will start removing blessings from us, or he'll stop giving blessings to us. Some people say, oh, you lose your salvation. That's not in the Bible. I know there are churches that have taught that, but you cannot find that in the Bible. If it is true, then God is a liar. Because he says in his word very clear, nothing, nothing can pluck you out of his hand. So, uh, what could happen to someone who consistently made unwise decisions? I mean, just best case, you've lost your joy and that is a miserable place to be. Miserable place to be. So decisions matter, choices matter. God has given each of us an opportunity to live what, or excuse me, to live with what is known as free will. Of course, you know, we can, we're free to choose. And, and, you know, I heard a preacher say a long time ago, God made you a free moral agent. We're free to choose. And, and, you know, the, the Paul talked about that to the Church of Corinth. He says, you know, you can do anything you want. He said, anything you want. He said, but, but it might not edify God. He said, you're, you can do anything you want. And, and that's a whole nother sermon right there. But what we forget to teach others through discipleship is the importance of personal responsibility. That's where we're talking about, you know, some people want authority or wanna be a leader without serving first. So bad outcomes come through bad choices and choices are made as we exercise free will. So we're gonna watch that video and, and then that'll, uh, point us into the rest of the lessons. So Brother Gil, is the camera still awake up there?
Uh, we're gonna find out.
If you buy a set of chapters, you will notice that on top of each chapter is a crown. That's because every chapter was created to become a king. That's the idea of every chapter. To get to the other side of the board as a king so that they can do so much more, move in so many different directions. If there's a problem, isn't there? Even though everyone was created to become a king, every chapter, a lot of them won't make it. Because there's an opposing force that wants to jump in and remove them off the board. What determines whether an individual chapter becomes a king, that gets crowned? And that achieves so much more? It all depends on who's influencing the world. God has called men the kingdom men under His word. And He is saying, if you let me do the moves, there will be opposition. There is gonna be an enemy. But we're gonna outmaneuver Him so that we get to the other side of this board and He get crowned. A crown because you let me be the influencer of you as you influence others. You see Psalm eight, verses four to six says that, once man with all might hold him, you have crowned him with majesty. Every man is born with a crown. He is born to be king. But our spiritual enemy wants to kick us off the board. That's why we need to be influenced by God ourselves and through God's influence on us, be influencer in the lives of others. Isn't that what coaches do? They get their team ready to play. They're good coach. They're gonna influence the productivity of the men under their care and responsibility. God's calling on all men to become kingdom men and to become kingdom influencers so that they're raising up the next generation. And there are three things you wanna make sure you influence the men as a kingdom man yourself. One is the development of the character. What kind of people are they? Are they good people or bad people? Are they productive people or non-productive? Are they spiritual men or carnal men? What kind of character are you developing? And then there's competence. Do they develop excellence in what they've been called to do, or do they settle for mediocrity? Is it good enough just to get by? Is competence not a priority? And then there's commitment. That they're gonna hang in there when the going gets tough. They're gonna persevere and not quit when everyone else does. They're gonna rise to the challenge of the day and not sacrifice what they've been called to do just because they don't stick to it when the going gets tough. Yeah, you wanna influence them in that thinking all under a spiritual umbrella, a covenant. And the Bible is full of that kind of mentoring, that kind of influencing and that kind of discipleship. Over and over again, you find men influencing men under the hand of God. One of the great illustrations of that is the relationship of Moses and Joshua. Throughout the progress of Moses' journey, you see Joshua popping up. Moses would go do his tent of meeting to spend time with God. And the scripture says, and Joshua sat outside the tent of meeting when everybody else stayed at their own tent. He hung close to Moses. When Moses went up to the mountain to spend time with God, it said, and Joshua, his servant, went up with him. When it was time to go to battle and Moses was on the top of the hill, he said, Joshua, you go down and fight. While I hold up the rod of God to give you victory because you're the young man to fight. I'm the older man to make spiritual contact with God while you fight. We've got a generation that's in a fight. We need the generation ahead of them to link arms with God so that they win their battles because we're kingdom influencers. It's Elijah and Elijah Shaw. Elijah Shaw walked with Elijah Shaw to find out how to do this prophetic thing. And he learned it well and he emulated him and became a great prophet in the hand of God. Oh yeah, if you're, if you're serious about being a kingdom man, you're gonna be looking for opportunities to influence. Influencing your own boys and then finding other boys to influence. Other young men like Abraham who not only circumcised the son, but says he circumcised every male in his household, that's the folks who work for him. Are you an influencer at work? Do you rub off on your coworkers, particularly the men? Because they see your character, your competence and your commitment and it is undeniable. Is it clear to the boys in your home that you say that Joshua twenty-four fifteen? As for me in my house, this is how we roll. This is how we roll, up in here, up in here. So me in my house, we will serve the Lord. And it was saying that, telling the other folks, y'all can go with the culture. I'm going with the Lord. Do they know you are cultural? And are you influencing them away from negative peer pressure, negative media programming, negative technology? Because you are the dominant influencer in their lives. You're controlling the agenda. God is looking for kingdom influences today. I had a kingdom influencer in my life. My father, he's gone on to be with the Lord, but he became a Christian at thirty years old. And he transformed my home and my life. I'm the oldest of four. When he fell in love with Jesus and fell in love with the Word, he brought me up with that same love. But we had family devotion, whether I felt like devotion or not. And the only time I got to this church is if I, if I even was sick or I could think being sick enough to make it look real. And then he had to see something to validate that I was sick. Cause they didn't ask me if I felt like going to church. This is how we rolled in his house. He would correct me when I was wrong. I remember one time I got suspended for fighting in school. And they called my father out of his job at the long shoulder, which meant he had to punch out and not get paid for the rest of the day. I'll never forget what he told the principal. He looked at the principal and said, I'll tell you this. You'll never have to ever, ever worry about Tony Evans being suspended again. I knew it then and now. They called me statues. He was gonna wear me out. Not only because I got suspended, but because I had embarrassed the family name. And the family name was tied to Jesus Christ. And so that became a daily ritual as he became a dominant influencer in my life, the most dominant influencer. So when people hear me preaching in church or teaching on the radio or doing a Bible study like this, when I went to the Museum of the Bible and saw my Bible, sitting in the Museum of the Bible, I reflected on my father. Because that Bible's only there, this study's only here, because I had a dominant influencer who did not crack under the pressure of racism that we had to deal with, the pressure of poverty that we often had to deal with. He didn't crack because he was a kingdom man and he was gonna raise kingdom boys. Well, the challenge today is are you ready to make your declaration? God won't make the declaration for you. He'll support the right choice, but you have to make the choice. Deuteronomy thirty says, you choose. Do you want me to rule over you, or do you wanna rule over yourself? I'll let you rule over yourself independently of me and define manhood as you defined it or as a culture defined it. Or you can let me define it for you, dictate to you and see what your destiny looks like then as you influence others in my way. Two young boys wanted to, the scene of the older professor, who they didn't particularly like. Because he was so, he knew so much that they wanted to show him he wasn't all out of the bag of chips. So they came up with a scheme. They caught a little bird and they held the bird in their hand. They said, we're gonna ask the professor, is the bird dead or alive? And he says, the bird is alive. We're gonna squeeze our hand so we'll open it up to a dead bird. If he says the bird is dead, we're gonna open our hand and the bird will fly away. Either way, this man won't be wrong. So they came and said, we have a bird in our hand. Older professor, is this bird dead or alive? The professor looked at the hand, stared at the hand, and then looked at the young men and said, gentlemen, the answer is in your hands. Gentlemen, the answer for your life and your future, the future of your family and our culture is in your hands. Are you committed to being a kingdom man who influences others to become kingdom men? So there is a movement of kingdom men on the rise. To make a dent for the kingdom of God that cannot be ignored by the culture. Whether that happens or not is our choice because the answer is in our hands.
I just wanted to get the video out there and, and just, just kinda reiterate a couple of things there and we'll wrap up. But top of page one twenty-six, if you've got your book there, just one question. It says, how do our choices demonstrate what we are serious? Or, excuse me, how do our choices demonstrate that we are serious about influencing others? And, and what I wrote was, what we persist at, we will, we draw others to do so also. What we persist at, we draw others to do so also. So, so let, let that sink in. And he talked about three things there and, and I tell you, the Lord's kinda laying on my heart to maybe preach about these three things this Sunday. I don't know where that'll go between now and, uh, eleven o'clock Sunday. But, uh, three qualities of a kingdom influencer. Character. I think we have a lot of people that have pretty good character. Competence. You know, have, have they really developed that, that, that learn, grow and serve? And then, then what really says it all is commitment. I, I, I mentioned this at the beginning of our session tonight. Being a, a man of commitment. So many say yes, but they really mean maybe. I want you to think about that. Character, competence, commitment. And, and without the first two, there is no third of commitment. So many say yes, but they really mean maybe. So let's stand, we'll be dismissed. Your heavenly Father, we come to you again. Lord, thank you for these men that have come tonight and set a time aside, Lord. I know there's many other things we could be doing, Lord. Maybe just simply sitting in our chair, doing nothing at all. Lord, we chose to come and to fellowship together, to, to open the word of life together, to, to get deeper in study of your word, Lord. And I pray for a special blessing upon these men. Lord, I pray that we can be the influencers that you've called us to be. Lord, I pray you will encourage us where we need to be encouraged, maybe discourage the things in our lives that need to be discouraged, Lord. Again, that you may be the influencers you've called us to be. And we thank you and we love you in Jesus' name. Amen.